Okay. Let's see. Counsel is present. Staff is present. That needs to be anyone that is missing tonight? I think we're all here. Um, let's see. Announcements, additions to the agenda? None? Declarations of ex-party contact, conflicts of interest or bias? None? Presentations, comments from the public? Uh, Reese?
Would you --
Now we do dog park?
No.
No? We're just gonna comments from the -- you wanna do that now or later?
No comment.
Later? Okay, let's do it later. All right. Anyone else? Comments from the public? Anything that isn't on the agenda that anyone needs to share with us right now? We'll have another opportunity at the end of the meeting. Okay. Consent agenda. November 7th, 2016, City Council minutes. And each of you has a copy of those.
Mr. Mayor?
A chance to peruse those. Yes, Ralph?
I would move that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Okay.
Second?
Motion and a second to accept the consent agenda as presented. Everyone's had a chance to look at it. Uh, if you're ready, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post, same sign. And the motion is passed five to zero. Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Brian?
Point of clarification really quick on the comments from the public. I don't believe that the dog park item is a hearing. Would that not be the time to hear comments from the public? It would be now? As opposed to...
Well, it is a -- it's a, um, hm, it's an agenda item this evening, yes.
Just a question.
Okay. And the next thing we've got is a public hearing on a proposed code amendment regarding permitted limited manufactured uses in the downtown mixed-use zoning districts. And I need to read this before we start. And then we'll get into it here. "Good evening. My name's Henry Porter. I'm mayor of Stateon and I will be presiding over this hearing. This is the time and place set for the public hearing in the matter of land use file 20-10/16 concerning legislative amendments to the Land Use Development Code regarding manufacturing uses in the downtown mixed-use zones. Hearing's now open. At the back counter is the agenda for this evening's meeting, which lays out the order in which people will be called to speak during the public hearing. A copy of the proposed amendments, the City Council's rules and procedure for land use public hearings, and a brochure written to facilitate your participation in the public hearing. You're encouraged to obtain and read a copy of these documents as well. At this time, I would ask the audience if there are any objections to the notice for this hearing? Hearing none. To the jurisdiction of this body to hear and consider this matter? Hearing none. Are there any declarations of conflict of interest, ex-party contact, or bias by any members of this body? I hear none. We are now ready for the staff report."
Mr. Mayor, while you heard none, I will point out that there is one council member who is a resident and property owner of the affected zones, and she probably should declare a potential for a possible appearance of conflict of interest.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
Yes. I mean, there are some things I thought that that would be, but this isn't one of them, but I don't have a problem with that at all.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah, so I will recuse myself from this...
You don't need to recuse yourself, but you need to declare that there is a potential for an appearance of conflict of interest.
I declare that there could be a potential conflict of interest here, since I own property in what would be considered the downtown area. And the downtown area is, does it go to Jennifer's office?
Yeah, I believe it does. So there's probably two of them who should.
Apparently, I as well have a potential conflict or potential for the appearance of a conflict of interest, so...
Okay. Well, it all comes out.
Right.
Okay, we're ready for the staff report. Dan?
Thank you. So, the issue before the council this evening is a public hearing on legislative amendments to the Land Use and Development Code that would allow certain manufacturing uses in the downtown mixed-use zoning districts. And following the public hearing, you'll be requested to consider ordinance 1001 to amend the code. The land use code has a table in it that spells out the permitted uses in each of the zoning districts. And currently, the only manufacturing use that is permitted in any of the downtown mixed-use zones is the printing and related support activities. And that is limited to 10,000 square feet or smaller. In the past couple of years, the city's received really two requests or inquiries about possible small-scale manufacturing in the downtown area. The planning commission was approached at its August meeting about the possibility of allowing these types of limited manufacturing uses in the downtown area. And at that time, expressed a willingness to consider an amendment to the code. An amendment was drafted. The planning commission looked at it. They held their public hearing at their, when was that? That was their October meeting. So, the amendment that is before you would allow, I have to look at it here, a number of, but not all, manufacturing uses in the downtown area. Those uses that just by their nature would be either, would not fit into the size restriction or have potential for significant traffic, odor, noise, dust, et cetera, were not included. The amendment would allow food manufacturing, beverage manufacturing, textile manufacturing, apparel and leather manufacturing, and fabricated metal products, furniture and related product manufacturing, miscellaneous manufacturing. It would also allow wood products manufacturing, except for sawmills and wood preservation, veneer, plywood, and engineered wood product manufacturing, wood container and pallet manufacturing, or manufactured home manufacturing. All of the manufacturing uses that would be permitted would be limited to no more than 8,000 square feet of gross floor area. And there is a requirement that at least 15 percent of the floor area be dedicated for some type of retail sales or showroom within the facility. And that that retail sales space be directly accessible from the street, not in the back of the building. So that there is some semblance of a retail presence with the business. The planning commission, as I said, held their public hearing and has unanimously recommended approval. You've got a copy of their order. And the staff's recommendation is that ordinance 1001 be enacted as presented. If you have any questions, I'll do my best to answer them.
Actually, I guess we're supposed to go through the questions from council. I'm still on trial. Anybody? Dan, specifically, microbreweries would fit into this?
Yes.
Or craft breweries?
A brewery would be, is part of beverage manufacturing, yep.
I don't know as well. I have to see if beer is as good as it used to be, but not very often anymore. But do those, are there... What's a brewery do to the neighborhood?
Depends what you use. Depends on what you used to drink.
No, no, but what, sound, smell, effluent, this kind of thing? I don't know.
Yep. If there was a brewery, there might be some odors from the hops or the yeast, but we have a, we currently have a food manufacturer in the downtown area that's a non-conforming use, a bakery, a wholesale bakery. In the 10 years I've been here, there's never been any complaints about odors from the bakery.
So, I think it helps to think of what current, like, the Ram in Salem is a brewery. And I've never noticed anything around it. And I've actually been around some coffee shops that also roast their own beans, which this would fall under that category also too, right?
Yeah. If, um, the Ram is a restaurant. It's an eating and drinking establishment that happens to also be a brewery.
Okay.
So, and, so, you know, at some point, you gotta decide when is it a brewery that serves meals? And when is it a restaurant that brews their own? But, so, the code amendments are intended to allow manufacturing operations that have the potential to have minimal off-site impacts, are limited in size, and have some portion of the floor area dedicated to retail sales. The two businesses that have approached me in the past couple of years, one was a coffee bean roaster that was not intending to sell by the one-pound bag or brew. They were, you know, it was gonna be going out in 50-pound bags in the back of a truck. So, there was no retail operation at all. And they were told, sorry, no, that's manufacturing, not permitted. And the other is a wood window manufacturer, who is interested in, it's an individual who currently has a shop someplace else and is interested in establishing his business downtown.
Okay. Thank you, Dan.
And again, there's Love and Oven is, you know, once they closed the cafe, they essentially became a manufacturing operation, what, four or five years ago now?
Oh, the Love and Oven?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, that is, that is a, for lack of a better term, a wholesale bakery. It is food manufacturing. It is not, there is no retail operation going on at that location.
What, another question. Would they have to do some retail sales there to comply with this?
They would continue to be a non-conforming use, because they would not comply, their current business model, they would not be complying with the, with the retail sales requirement.
Okay.
Because they, they don't retail. They retail from their First Avenue location.
So, they would, what, would they come down and ask for a non-conforming?
They don't need, they don't need to ask. They, they're already there.
They're just there?
Yeah.
Ah, okay. All right. Any other questions from council? Uh, proponents' testimony?
I did have a question, Dan.
Go ahead, please.
I'm still, I'm still not clear on, on the Love and Oven thing.
We'll go back.
So, could, if we pass this, could that require them to start doing retail from there?
No.
What could require somebody to change what they're doing?
Nothing, nothing. There's a provision in our code that says if we change the code and you become non-conforming, you are allowed to continue.
Okay. So, they were manufacturing in downtown prior to this, so we allowed manufacturing in downtown?
Um, I don't know about that. They were there when I got here. But when I, but 10 years ago, they had a retail component.
Okay, so they're being grandfathered in regardless, is what you're saying.
So, yes, they are, yeah.
Okay.
Well, at some point, we had the woolen mill downtown. So, there must have been manufacturing then, of course.
Yeah, that actually was zoned industrial until about six, seven years ago.
Yeah.
Any other questions from council? Other? Go ahead, please.
My biggest concern about this would be the noise that might arise from one of these businesses. Is there anything that would prevent noise problems between neighboring businesses or homeowners?
We would need to address that in the site plan review process, but we don't have specific, as council knows from other issues in the city, we don't have good noise standards in our code.
Other questions? Okay. How about some proponents' testimony? Those in favor of this?
Anything?
Any opponents' testimony? I don't mean to rush through this, but when there's the great quiet out there, we'll just keep going. General testimony? Questions from the public? Anything? More questions from council? Dan, any kind of staff summary?
I don't have anything else to add. You've got the ordinance in front of you for your consideration.
Okay. Well, then, we're gonna go ahead if there's nothing else at this point. Let's go ahead and close the hearing and council deliberation. What would you like to do with this one, folks?
Mr. Mayor, I don't, I don't see where this would be a problem with limited size and scope. I don't, I don't see this as being, and who could argue with fresh baked bread? Come on here.
That was, I thought a real loss when Love and Oven closed that retail part four or five years ago. You know, it was, it was an attraction downtown. There are people in there for lunch every day.
We have a lot of empty buildings down in that area. I think the more that we can open up the possibility for people to come in and do art or whatever they wanna do and sell it on-site or in small manufacturing, again, I think the more barriers we can take out of people actually using that space, the better.
Which would mean that there would be more people downtown, which means that we would need more big goods to sell. So, Love and Oven would sell, then.
I don't know if we wanna get hung up on bakeries yet, Ralph.
You know.
Okay. All right. What would you folks like to do with this one tonight?
Mr. Mayor, I would move that we approve ordinance number 1001 as presented.
I second it.
Got a motion and a second to approve ordinance number 1001 amending State and Municipal Code Title 17 regarding manufacturing uses in downtown mixed-use zones. Any discussion? Okay. Alyssa, would you poll the council, please?
Counselor Gladwell?
Yes.
Counselor Lewis?
Aye.
Counselor Quigley?
Yes.
Counselor Uselman?
Yep.
Counselor Niegel?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
Okay. Motion is five to zero. Ordinance is passed. Thank you. Unfinished business, none tonight. New business, the Putney and Lambert property acquisitions. Mr. Lambert, Lance?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Tonight before you, the issue is, should the city move forward with the acquisition of the Putney and Lambert properties?
Should we? Do you turn the overheads off? What do you think?
I'd like to be able to see my text.
You don't have a light there to, you don't know if I hark?
No, no. I should, though. Oh, I have a flashlight. There we go. Thank you, Reese. Okay, little bit of background information. Both these properties were brought before council and executive session in the recent past. The city currently has the Lambert property, 13.71 acre parcel of land, as you can see on the handout there, under contract. The tax lot is being partitioned into two parcels. The back parcel will be owned by the city of Stateon, and the front parcel is under contract by Hayden Homes, and they're currently looking at building a 50-lot subdivision. The back lot, the city has in the design process now of a regional detention facility. It'll be a 10-acre foot detention facility. The purpose of that will be taking water, stormwater offline from the Salem ditch and routing it north through our detention facility, which will eliminate flooding along the banks of the Salem ditch. The city also has under contract recently the Putney property. That is a 23-acre piece of property that is north of the Lambert property. The property is known as the Putney property. The maps, you can see in the memorandum, and it's situated just north of the Lambert property. The Lambert and Putney property is being purchased for two definitive purposes. As I just said, the city will design a regional detention facility on the Lambert property, which is just south of the Putney property. A portion of the Putney property will also be included in the detention facility as well. We'll be routing our outfall ditch through the Putney property to Mill Creek, thereby saving a couple hundred thousand, almost $300,000 of piping that we would have to purchase to go north to Mill Creek along the west edge of the Putney property. The staff invisions the majority of the Putney property to be developed into a park, a parks and recreation complex. The master plan identifies several areas of need for the city, baseball fields, soccer fields, two amongst them. We're also looking at perhaps putting a skate park there, as well as a dog park, and whatever else we can potentially fit into that area. The city is in the process now of obtaining a landscape architect to do a master plan of both these parcels. Once we get that master plan done, it'll give staff, aid staff in obtaining grants and other funding to develop the land into a state-of-the-art parks and recreation complex. Funds to purchase the Lambert property will be, it will come from a portion of the $1.5 million state lottery fund granted to the city in 2013. Motion's before the council tonight. Number one, motion to approve the proposal to allow staff to move forward with the purchase of the Lambert and Putney properties as presented. Or two, take no action on the proposal and direct staff to cancel the contract for the purchases. And with that, I will answer any questions that you may have regarding this acquisition or our plans.
Thank you, Lance. I have one that just occurred to me tonight, just looking at this, and I've seen these plans before. We start putting water into Mill Creek, how does it impact, or if it impacts at all, the golf course? Do they, are they impacted by us?
Well, if, what we'll be doing is we'll be detaining the water to no more than what is going in there now, so...
I'm sorry, do that again, please.
We'll be detaining the water in that 10-acre detention basin.
Okay.
And releasing it at a rate that's no more than it's going in there currently.
Okay, that's fine.
So, if it's impacted at all, it's gonna be no more than it's impacted now. And we both know, if you driven by there, it can be less than a two-year event, and there's water into the golf course.
Okay.
And most of the time, it's in the winter time, so it really doesn't affect much. It's just, you know, you have to play left or play right to stay out of the water.
Hit the clubhouse.
Well, yeah.
Somewhere it's noon in the world.
We could do that, too.
As long as it's noon, it's time for a glass. Yeah, anyway.
Well, I'm not retired. I'll take your word for it.
I don't, I don't practice it. I just heard about it. Okay. Questions, council, thoughts?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Lance, this really solidifies the crown objective in the 20-year parks master plan, doesn't it?
I believe so, Brian. I think we'll be achieving many things with that 23 acres. We'll be, I mean, if you look at the survey that was done here recently, the citizens of the city wanted more parks and trails. We'll be able to have a trail system throughout the Putney property and connect up to the trails that go, are behind or north of the middle school. So, that will help. We'll also be able to, if you know, you all know that Roger Roberts is developing Wildlife Meadows. He's got paths that go through his property, which connect up to the school. Now, they don't go through the school yet, but that's something that we can work on. But I can see at a future date, you're gonna have trails through Wildlife Meadows, through the school district, through the Putney property, and then north up into that area. So, that takes care of the trails component. And then we'll also be able to build some baseball fields down in Flood Plain, soccer fields in the Flood Plain.
Yeah.
Perhaps a full-court basketball court. As we know, we've taken that out, and we did Pioneer Park last year, so there really isn't an outdoor full-court basketball court. There's areas for a dog park there, picnic areas. There's, once we get the master plan together, we'll be able to go to the OPRD, look for a major funding source to build this park and make it a really crown jewel of our park system, to be quite honest.
All right.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I have a question, can I? So, what is the, what is the current access to this property? And what, is there any kind of proposed access to it?
There is actually a home on the Putney property, and the access off Kendall Way.
And is that adequate for what we're planning, or is that gonna need to be part of the plan?
Well, here's what's gonna happen when we do, if we move forward and council approves this. We're gonna be finishing Kendall Way into a collective road, which we show in our transportation plan. So, that'll be widened, sidewalks on both sides, and that'll extend down to just Junko Way. And at that point, we'll have some parking, we'll have to create some parking lots. The Hayden property, the Hayden Homes property are gonna, they're gonna access from the two streets coming in from Quail Run, so that's how they'll access. Kendall Way will be finished, so we'll have a full collective road going north up to Junko. And then we'll have to be providing some parking lots in the Putney property, and that'll be something that'll be done in the master planning.
The simple math says that with Roberts subdivision coming online in the next couple of years, I guess, and this Hayden thing, we're looking at 100 new homes.
That's correct.
Yeah, I think, I'm close, anyway.
Yeah.
50 and 45 or so. Should have a real impact. I got, I don't know, an email, I think from Dan the other day, that said the town showed a 20-person increase in population in the last five years. Am I close, Dan?
Yes, about right.
It was the last year.
Last year.
Last year.
20 whole people. Oh, boy. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so 100, that'd be a dramatic population jump when those two developments are built out. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, just something to share with people. I have been kind of tracking recently the homes that I met in the Monmouth-Dallas area. And because I was hearing this a lot, I started counting it. And I think there were 16 people in about the last month and a half that were moving into homes there that told me that they had looked at this area and could not find anything.
They told you they'd looked where, I'm sorry?
In the Stateon area.
Oh.
And could not find anything to buy.
Okay, well...
So, that's good, that's good news, that we're building new homes.
Great.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. What would you like to do with this one, folks?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I'll offer a motion to approve the proposal to allow staff to move forward with the purchase of the Lambert and Putney properties as presented.
Can I second it?
Okay. A motion to, where am I here? New business. Let's get up here where the motion is. Motion to approve the proposal to allow staff to move forward with the purchase of the Lambert and Putney properties as presented. I had a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? Alyssa, again, we're spending... Alyssa, again, we're spending some money here, so let's get it on record.
Counselor Uselman?
Yes.
Counselor Nigle?
Yes.
Counselor Gladwell?
Yes.
Counselor Quigley?
Yes.
Counselor Lewis?
Yes.
Motion passes 5 to 0.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's really, that's really pretty dramatic. I, ah, I can't think of anything quite as potentially exciting in quite a while, but I probably missed a few things. Florence Street Dog Park, next.
This is near and dear to your heart, Mr. Mayor, so I bring this before council. The dog park, excuse me, let me get to that memorandum, sir. What about the mic? I will when I'm ready. Thank you, Chief. That issue before you tonight, members of the council and Mr. Mayor, is shall the city construct a dog park at 180 North at Fourth Avenue located in Fourth and Florence Street? Staff is trying to thoroughly confuse me tonight. A little bit of background on this. In 2015, the city sponsored a survey of citizens of Staton and developing a bark, dog park was rated the sixth highest priority for the city. The Parks Board's been trying for, find a location for a dog park for well over 10 years. In 2015, my office, the Public Works Department, offered up a location of the dog park in the Needling Edition of Pioneer Park. The cost of the simply constructed dog park was estimated to be approximately 20 grand, $20,000. This proposal was forwarded to the Parks Board in October of 2015. The Parks Board voted 4-1 to move that proposal forward to the Planning Commission for review and feedback. In November of 2015, the Planning Commission voted 4-0 on approval of the proposal. Facility, the city allocated $25,000 for the dog park in 2016-17 budget proposal. And the budget, the budget, in the 2016-17 budget, staff had recommended $25,000 for the dog park. In May of 2016, the Budget Committee had concerns about allocation of resources specifically for that dog park and they, so they moved that $25,000 into the development of the park system for future development. The proposed dogs street of Florence Street with, da-da-da-da-da, excuse me, sir. Soon after that, the, the park at Needling Edition of Pioneer Park was frowned upon and I was asked to move, find a new location for that park. I'll just leave it at that. Soon after the Budget Committee approved the budget, there was an effort by community members to find a new location. Members were focused on city-owned property in that new location at 180 North Fourth Avenue. Surface is a viable location of the dog park. The city-owned park is .46 acres and it's currently the location of the community garden. The first draft of the dog park was designed, it was only .1 acres, which was too small. At the September 2016 Parks Board meeting, the Parks Board discussed temporarily disbanding the community garden, constructing the dog park using the entire .46 acres. The Parks Board is committed to finding a new location for the community garden, so they voted 4-0 to move this proposal to the Planning Commission for review and feedback. That proposal was presented in October 31st of 2016 to the Planning Commission. There were concerns among audience members that the increased cost of the dog park was too much and versus what it was originally budgeted. And it was explained by staff that the increased cost was due to the improvements that we have to make in Fourth Avenue and Florence Street. The dog park also has some ADA sidewalks, some ramps, some platforms for our ADA members of the community, which drove the cost up considerably from 20,000 to 50,000, a little bit over $50,000. The remainder of the cost needed, and it was, it was mentioned, it, the Planning Commission would have to be raised by community efforts and donations. With that, the Planning Commission voted 4-0 to approve the proposal and to advance the proposal to the City Council. The impact of this, this proposal is very simple. We have $25,000 allocated towards parks improvements. Parks Development Fund would be used to help construct the dog park. The remainder of the cost for the dog park would have to be raised from the community itself, fundraising efforts. City staff will not be involved with raising those funds as we were with the Parks Board or the Pioneer Park. This will have to be 100% community-involved and be run and operated and over by members of the community. So the motion before you tonight, the motion is to approve this proposal and to allow staff to prepare plans for the dog park to be located at 180 North Fourth Avenue, the present location of the community gardens. Or you can motion to modify this proposal for the dog park to be located at Fourth Av, at Florence Street and Fourth. Or you can take no action until this proposal, until a suitable location of the community garden is located and presented to council. And with that, I will answer any questions that you may have, to the best of my ability.
Okay. Thank you. Lance, I see a, a, I see something in here that I don't know whether it came, where it came from, whether from the Planning Commission or the, the Parks Commission or city staff, was that if we were to approve this, the money would all have to be in place before it could be started or constructed. You know, that's an either, yeah, it's an either or.
Well, the 25, basically so, yeah. The $25,000 won't cover the improvements to Florence Street or Fourth Avenue, so.
And our code says those really have to be done in conjunction with this.
Well, if we're gonna follow the code as we make our developer friends within this community, I think it's the smart thing to do and the right thing to do, I guess.
Okay, all right, that's fine. But that, um.
And those aren't completely, those aren't all the improvements that would require somebody else if they were building a building there. We would make them finish both those streets with half-street improvements. We're not, we're not forcing ourselves to do that because we're not really generating any kind of revenue from that site.
Yeah.
So what we did do is say, all right, with the minimum, what we're gonna do is what the minimum we'd ask anybody else to do, and that is to construct sidewalks down both the frontages of that. And those improvements along the ADA ramps and so forth drove the cost up. So that's the minimum that we're gonna have to do as a city.
Okay. So what we could end up with is, I don't wanna beat this to death, but one more tap. What we could end up with is some nice sidewalks and ADA ramps and no park.
No, because I don't believe we'll move forward with the park until we have all the funds in there.
Okay.
That's why I put that in there like that. I think we need to have it all, Mr. Mayor, so we can have a project and we can start the project. And that's gonna be the cheapest way to do it as well. I mean, we go about, we do it one project, you're gonna get better prices that way. And since we're using taxpayer money, I just think that's probably the wisest way to do it. We're gonna be showing our citizens that we're spending their money wisely, and prudently.
Oh, I hope.
Trying.
Another reason to do that is because we need to be proud, I think, of what we do. I think we need to not do things that are not quality things. And so if we're gonna do this, we need to make it a quality dog park. And it doesn't have to be a state-of-the-art dog park, but it does need to be worthy of being able to brag a little bit about it.
Well, since it is a public park, we're, we are required by the state and I believe by the feds to provide ADA access to it. So there's no way around that. We need to provide sidewalks and handicap accessibility, as well as access into the dog park in a place for them to sit. That's just what we're bound by.
So you're looking for a new community garden, then? A location?
Well, we are to meet December, the first Tuesday in December, and that's the number one thing on our agenda, is to try to find a new location for the community garden. That's correct.
Lance, I've been in communication with Randy Benz at Norpac and they offer a couple of possibilities. One is that area, if you know where Pat and Matt Mack lived.
I do not know where they live.
Okay, it's out on Ida.
Thirty years ago.
And it was a 12 or 13 acre, maybe 20 acres behind Ida Street toward the canary.
I know where that is.
Just a big open field.
Yeah, I know where that's at, yeah.
Parcel of that. Another one that, and this is coming from Randy and to a certain extent George Smith, the president of Norpac. There's a small city lot, well, Norpac owns it, on the corner of Washington and Gardner with that one single Western ponderosa on it. Not just a ponderosa, but a Western ponderosa, different tree.
Own by itself.
Okay. And they offered that, and so vacant lot, but that has possibilities, too, so.
I think the Parks Board will be looking at that this next meeting. We would like, we're focusing on city-owned property, but of course, Norpac has been a major topic of conversation within the Parks Board. And we will proceed down every avenue that we have to try to find a suitable location for that, if this moves forward.
Well, it's a major part of the city and any involvement they would help with, I think would be appreciated and certainly looked at. Reese, could you, could you make a presentation? She's got a, she had a green card, but she wanted to wait till now to do it, so.
Yeah, thank you.
Weigh in on this, please.
Reese Bourdoux, 525 Maelstrom Woods, a block from where this dog park would be. And Maelstrom Woods has no, I mean, feels positive about it. I have a couple of questions. Where the dog park is and the street and where you're going to do the sidewalk, do you have to do a sidewalk on both sides of the street?
No, just on the frontage of the property.
So the whole long area and then the side where there's a gravel road going down to the metal-covered bridge?
That's correct. That's what we do with any developer in town that asks to do any kind of infill lot. We would ask that, we require that.
So we're putting a sidewalk that ends on mud?
It will transition into the gravel, that's correct.
Okay.
So if there is a, if there's ever a development, all they'll have to do is build the half-street improvement, the sidewalk will already be constructed. So, yeah, that's something, we could have us build a half a road there. I mean, that's what we could do, which would jack the price up considerably, but I think a sidewalk is a reasonable thing to ask, we would ask that.
And handicap, okay.
Yeah.
Well, the, a couple of things that I'd like to offer, and I think Lance, you have the numbers. Three years ago now, the Ford Foundation cohort voted to do a pavilion. The pavilion never got off the ground and they went back, I mean, the cohort went back to Ford and asked to transition the money. And I thought they met with you and had gotten approval to transition that money to the dog park.
That would be correct. That number is not as significant as you might think. I think it's around 500 bucks. But the Ford Family Foundation, they have to come up with a match, and I think that's all they have for a match right now. But those numbers may change.
Okay.
They're waiting upon action from the City Council to see if we're going forward or not, before they jump in with both feet.
Well, I received an email from somebody at Ford that said that following through with the cohort agreement had to do with the City Council's yes vote. But I believe it is up to, I think they will match up to $2,000. Will they not, Priscilla, because they did for the disc golf, or am I wrong?
It's actually more than that.
That's what I thought. I'm shocked when you say 500.
That, again, he's talking about, that's all that the cohort has.
Have right now.
That's correct.
Right.
However, you can, if the city comes in, I think that you can use the city money as a match.
I'm not sure how that works exactly, so.
So that would, that could raise it up to, I think, as much as 5,000.
Right. I, I, I thought that they told me 5,000 and that it did have to be matching. But it also won't even be available for the matching until the City Council approves doing the dog park. So just a little bit of information that a citizen voter is, there's about 8,000 people in Staton. Doing a dog park came in number six on the questionnaire. Of the 8,000 people in Staton, let's say 3,000 are residences, let's say one-half of those have kids, three-quarters of them have dogs. We have five children's parks in Staton. Anybody know what any one of those, the least expensive one of those children's parks cost? I don't, I'm asking you guys. I'm hoping you have a sense.
You're looking at the wrong person. No, I wasn't here when they bought those. I can tell you what we paid for, I won't do that. I don't know.
Any ideas? Any rough?
I'm sorry, without being prepared, I don't have that number right off the top of my head. And I guess it depends on what you're considering part of those improvements, like the street improvements and all of that. But I wasn't here for the last time we did. The improvements we did for Pioneer Park, just to give a rough estimate, were about 750,000.
Yeah, 750, that included a restroom.
Okay. Well, so that was the whole park, and I think, but 750,000. I didn't hear when you had the thing right before this, how much the property that Staton's buying costs, is gonna cost.
And that's, I'll leave that to our city administrator to answer that question.
Just, just under 1.1 million for both properties.
Okay. The dog park is small city peanuts. I really hope that as a City Council, you approve going forward with the dog park. I think that we saw a lot of interest and a lot of willingness to buy in. My suggestion would be to consider having the city somewhat agree to doing the least romantic parts, meaning street sidewalks, and have the dog-related, animal-related businesses come in with some of the things that we've talked about, Lance. Advertising, art banners on the fence, very nice, very classy, not tacky things, benches. We would be much more inclined to get a business in town, a veterinarian, to have their name engraved and pay for a $1,000 bench than 10 feet of concrete or cement or whatever it is. But I think we can raise the rest of the money and I think that this kind of just keeps getting shoved under the rug because the dogs can't come and wag their tails, so I'm doing it for them. Thanks.
I have a question, Reese, don't we?
Thank you, Reese.
Is there currently any kind of organized movement that might be willing to take on the raising of this additional $25,000?
Well, the bar keeps getting raised because I knew it was 25,000 was earmarked then. I thought it was 40,000 that you were talking about at the last time I heard an amount of money. So if it's 50,000, doesn't.
Yeah, I believe I said $50,000 at the Planning Commission. You might wanna check Dan's records, but I believe I said 50,000 there. That's got a little bit of contingency in it.
Okay.
But again, we've got $25,000 to work with in the Parks Fund.
So we have half of the money and a potential of five with matching from Ford and that's, so let's say that's 30 and we'd have 20 to raise, to make this the most elite dog park in Oregon, frankly, because I've not seen one that's handicap-accessed or has curbs and da-da-da-da and all, but in any of them that I've visited.
The city of Twolleton has that. It's by my house and it's handicap-access. Any kind of park facility, you need to have, be able to get ADA-accessible folks there. That's just part of it.
The one I was next to, Eugene, also has.
Okay. I mean, I've seen them be flat and with the gates, so I guess that's eight, but I don't know what other, what cost there is in that. Anyway, that's your, you're the pros for that. Are, are you saying, let's see, three years ago, when I went around and lobbied for people to be interested in this for Ford, I didn't find one negative. We also had vets and groomers and people that we just kind of suggested, look, if you were buying a $1,000 bench, if you were buying $200 worth of fence where we would have something done, we got yeses. But we all know that's different than when they open their checkbook. I'm also a little bit disappointed to hear that the city doesn't plan to, to help at all. I mean, I guess you figure the 25 is the help, but when. I mean, I guess you figure the 25 is the help, but when, when other projects have been done, like the park, the city did help. So, I can tell you that I'll do all I can to raise $20,000, and I'm pretty sure I can do it, but I'm not going to have anybody that's going to hand it to me tonight or tomorrow. So, you know, I hope we don't table it to go in the property of that place you're talking about buying five years from now, because I still think we can do it. And if you do a plan and we have a way of really telling people that it's definite, I think they'd give their money when they know it's going to happen. I don't think they're going to give it when we say it's over there where that mud puddle is. So, anyway, that's just fact too. But I'm open to suggestions if the city, you know, I know that you did go out for money for other things, but, yeah.
Thanks.
Thank you, Reese. Other questions or thoughts on this one?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes. Brian and then the lady out there.
Oh, go ahead. I'll yield.
Please.
Judy Moni, 2110 East Pine Street. I think if everybody can work together, this can happen. And if we have the passion and the people behind it, if you're talking about new subdivisions, that's more people coming into this community, which creates tax base for the city as well. And I'm sure they would have dogs also. And if you can work with some of the other companies that have been mentioned tonight, maybe they might come forward and help too financially. It's a struggle, but we're for a dog park. We have a dog and I've met Gus. And I think it's a place for people to meet socially and you get to know more people and it draws the community together. So, hopefully, there can be a group that would help raise the rest of the money. I mean, having $25,000 is a plus. So, if all the people with dogs come out there with their passions and know about it and it's advertised and talked about, I think we can get there. Thanks.
Thank you, ma'am. Brian?
Mr. Mayor, I attended the planning commission where this discussion took place. And the amount of money at that point that I brought up was $50,000, to which point, I think I was corrected and it was $48,000. So, Reese has a point about the number keeps climbing. But I will tell you now, is what I told the planning commission at that time, is that I'm not opposed to a dog park, I'm just opposed to this location for several reasons. First one being that currently there is no leash law in Marion County. And at the moment, Staton has probably the largest dog park in Marion County in Riverfront Park. So, you're going to take this potential property here that could be in the future, a potential parking facility for the proposed city hall across the street, depending on what we do at the Moose Lodge, and you're going to turn it into a dog park so people potentially be driving right past the dog park to go walk their dog in the Riverfront Park. At the time of the planning commission meeting, I couldn't say anything about the acquisition of the property we voted on tonight. As you heard tonight, say that's a potential for a dog park as well. The $50,000 now, and I don't believe it's going to be $50,000, I think it's going to be more than that, really is quite the amount of money to spend on a project where our streets are falling apart. And if we have to make it ADA-accessible, as Lance mentioned, we're going to have to do the ADA-accessible with the future park on the Putney property. The planning, I'm sorry, the budget commission, the budget committee was kind of taken aback when they saw that that $25,000 was earmarked for the park, for a dog park specifically, to the point where they made the motion and the change was park improvements. And that's how they passed and that's what was in the budget. So, my suggestion would be that we continue with the concept of a dog park, but realize and look at the location to be the benefit for the entire community going forward. Thank you.
Michelle, councilman?
I have had residents talking to me about this dog park now for years. Not just a few, a lot of people that are really, really interested in this happening. I can tell you that when the downtown group did the parklet, I spent many nights on that parklet while we were doing things to it. And I forgot what I told you, Keith, that I counted one night, but it was literally like 18 people walking their dogs past that parklet in a two-hour period, which is right where that dog park, right near where that dog park would be. I think that this is something that actually does address the needs of a lot of our community. I think the major, more than not, that it actually would benefit our community. I think that a lot of the things that are done, are going to be done there, are things that could be done regardless of the use of the property, such as the curbs and the sidewalks. Those can be used if we, at some point down the road, change that use and have a different thing. But I think to put this off after all of the time and energy that citizens have put into it and the long time that they've waited for it is not fair to them. I just don't think it is, particularly when it won't move forward unless they raise $20,000. So, obviously, if we give the go-ahead, that if they raise the $25,000, we would do it. That's, that's a huge commitment on the part of many, many members of this community. And so, if there is no interest in it, then obviously it'll just die. But I would hate for us to be the bump in the road that stops it from moving forward if the people in the community want it, and I think that they do.
Thank you, Priscilla. Any other thoughts or comments here?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Lance, did you say that the dog park was the highest priority for parks on the city survey?
No, I said it was sixth.
So, there were five other items that were higher for parks on that survey?
No, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. No, we didn't break it down actually into parks. I was talking about the master plan. If you look at the Parks Master Plan, there are several areas that they highlight that Staton is lacking, and those are baseball fields, soccer fields, basketball courts. There's no mention of dog park in the Staton Master Plan. What I was referring to is the survey that the city performed with our citizens last, last fall of 2015, and a dog park was sixth on that list. But I think it was sixth for all the park facilities.
For overall, overall.
Yeah, that's correct. I stand corrected. It was sixth for the parks and recreational desires of our citizens. It was sixth. I think it was parks and trails, activities for folks over 50. There were some numerous, numerous things, but a dog park was sixth.
Okay. Thank you, Lance.
I stand corrected. I apologize for that. I'm reading master plan today.
Keith, do we have the results of that survey?
We're looking to pull them up right now.
I think it was somewhere around 18%. I got it.
Come on, computers.
We had 23 seconds and holding.
Once I get it open.
It's like watching water trying to boil. Walk away. So, we're looking for it, so I guess we can have other discussion.
I guess my point is that if it was the sixth highest priority, it seems to have jumped to the top of the list and it seems like we should be looking at some of those other things that people, you know, numbers one through five, what people really want. People have been talking about a skate park now for 30 years, since I was younger. And the basketball courts and some of those other things, so.
Costs for one of those are kind of overwhelming though.
Yeah.
And that was, I gave the first 20, I told you, you and everybody else that lived, I gave the first $20 for a skate park years ago. A couple of moms were trying to get something going. Did it very dramatically. Ta-da, and here's 20 bucks, get it going. But what are the costs on that? $400,000 are they talking about?
Skate park?
Yeah.
Oh, they range, I think the one in Silverton was, I don't even want to, but I've looked into it, but since we dropped that six months ago, seven months ago, it's kind of fallen off the radar, but they can go anywhere from 300,000 to 300, or 750,000, depending on the skate park.
Oh, my goodness.
So, it really depends. I mean, if you have to buy the land, obviously that raises the price of it up.
Right. And that really is targeting one very specific group. The dog park is not targeting one, I mean, it, all ages, all, I think that, I forget, I didn't know that I was going to need to do it, but there's, there's all kinds of other benefits about a dog park, including the lowering of crime in a certain amount of distance away from the dog park because there's people there all the time. And I mean, there's just like, and the social benefits that you talked about, there's, there's a tremendous amount of positive things that happen in the area of a dog park.
Lance?
Yes, sir.
In the event we pass this tonight, does that mean the $25,000 in the budget currently is set aside or frozen until the $25,000 is raised?
I think we'd have to talk to the city administrator about that, but I, I guess.
And in the event it does, how long is that for? What's the term on that?
Well, at the very minimum, it'd be until fiscal year.
Till the next budget?
End of June, yeah.
What if, good points at all, and have well-thought-out concerns? What little passion I have in me is certainly pushing toward something happening here, but at the same time, what if we wait till the next budget, budget cycle?
I really think that, that you're going to lose some of the passion that, I think that people are going to think that we do, that we're not doing anything, I guess, is my, my feeling, if we don't, if we don't at least give them the opportunity to move forward. That, that's all we're saying at this point, is we're just saying, we're just giving them the opportunity to move forward. If, if they take that opportunity, great, then we, then we have a beautiful facility that we've only paid half for. If we don't just at least allow them that option, then I, I just don't see, I see no benefit in not allowing them the chance to, to raise at, at half or more of the money for a facility.
But nothing, nothing precludes us, or precludes them, from raising the money ahead of time and then coming to the council and say, look, we did it. Okay, let's go forward.
Except that doesn't, it doesn't look like we're saying, go for it. We're not much of a cheering committee in that way.
I don't know that the council has any reserve, has, has the authority to say, don't raise any money.
But why, why would you be against the other way then? I mean, it's six of one, half a dozen of the other.
I'm not against it. They have the ability right now to do that, to go out and start fundraising from a grassroots level and then come and say, okay, we have 25 grand, let's, this park in place.
And again, then why not just say, yes, we give you our blessing, go ahead and raise it?
Because we don't have to give them the blessing. They have the ability to do that right now without any other thing we do. Whether we say yes or no, they can do that.
I would like to show them that I'm interested in what they're interested in.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
So, we have the survey results. So, citizens had a choice of up to three, there were several options. Services for, services for youth, 53.4%. Walking, biking, 52%. Adult services for citizens over the age of 50, 25.6%. Skate park, 23.3%. Improvements to the community center, 20.2%. Dog park, six, 16.8%. And other came in seventh at 16.2%.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
Keith, I don't know if you heard my question to Lance about the funds.
Sorry.
If we were to pass this tonight, the funds that are earmarked for the dog park in the budget would be frozen specifically for this project, correct?
I think what, what I would interpret this as, is a vote saying yes would be yes, that those are the funds that we've earmarked for parks improvements now be earmarked for a dog park pending the additional money being raised. I wouldn't want to spend the money and then they raise the money.
Sure, sure. And the timeframe to do that would be till the next budget cycle?
Yeah, it'd be till the next budget cycle. At that point, if, if the funds weren't raised, we could determine what we wanted to do.
Now, do that, do that last part again. Funds are not spent in this budget cycle, what happens?
Then they, they're allocated for this year, so based off our new budget philosophy, we, we clear all the budget items, so it would have to be a budget item that would be presented again next year for consideration.
I have auditory handicap, as you all know. The last part of that, one more time.
So, to answer the question, yes, if we don't spend the money by this year, the funds would be unspent for the budget cycle. Our new budget process is we don't just carry over funds, so it would be a new budget item that would go for the 16, 17 budget cycle. That's the way it'd have to be brought forward.
What happens, what happened to that allocation on June 30th?
It just would be unspent.
But it's still there.
Yes, I mean, the money is still there, it just would be an unspent, it would be...
They could come back and ask for it again, or not.
It would just have to be approved at the next, next budget cycle.
Yeah, okay. But could, could the budget committee, in its infinite wisdom, just add that to another allocation?
Sure. I mean, I think if I'm understanding the question correctly, which is, next year for the next year's budget, a dog park would need to be presented again and approved by the budget committee.
You know, if we say we're not going to allow fundraising for this thing, so we just take this year's 25, add 25 to it in the next budget cycle and build the thing next year, or next budget cycle?
Mr. Mayor, can I ask a question in a more distinct way then? How long would they have to raise the $25,000?
Match basically until June 30th for us to allocate the funds.
But is that just a random date we're pulling out of this?
Well, that's the end of the fiscal year, so unless...
I understand.
Basically, that line item is zeroed out, is what I believe Keith is saying, and then we have to propose the 25,000 or 50,000, as you were saying, for the dog park. And the budget committee would have to approve it. Seems like a pretty straightforward process. It's just zeroed out, it's gone.
Correct. That, that answer it?
Yeah, yeah, I just, I just wanted to see, and I, I hope it was an easy enough question, can we just go into the next budget cycle, just add, add a money until we have enough, if we can't do it in the, in the out looking for donations way of doing things? Reese?
Why would we want to spend money if we can get the citizens to raise it?
I think the citizens can raise it, and why you want to vote now is because then we have a chance for the Ford money, which I still believe is 5,000 matching. If you table this and wait until the next budget, Ford is not going to give the cohort another whatever, extension.
Okay.
I think the Ford is 5,000, but you have to come up with the $5,000 to match that 5,000. And I'm not sure if they allow the city funds to be used as that matching fund. That's the question I just didn't know about when you were asking.
Okay.
That's where I guess where I was getting at.
It's my understanding they won't allow any, that, yes, they will allow city funds as long as they aren't funds that were received from Ford. In other words, if you received money to help with this dog park from Ford, we couldn't use that as matching money.
And we could use budget, budgetary numbers, I just don't know that question.
Yeah, I'm thinking that we can, as long as it wasn't money granted from Ford. When we were looking before at the park, apparently this park, you received some money from Ford or from someone to do that, and we could not use that matching because you had received that from them. And so, at that time, what they said was, is that we could, we could use city money as long as it wasn't money that had been received from, a grant from Ford. So, again, that's why it, it's important that we do this now. We'll just lose the money if we don't.
If Reese and I started, put together this, this passionate group, eh, group, let's leave the passionate out of it, that decided to start raising money tomorrow, do we need, we don't need any sanction from the city, do we? Saying, yes, you may.
Let's do it.
Just go ahead and do it.
For the Ford Foundation, you do need.
For the Ford Foundation, you do need the sanction. We, they, they need to show that the city council is behind this process.
Oh, okay. Is that an item down the trail a ways, or, no, it would need to happen?
Now.
Soon?
Tonight.
Tonight? Oh, okay, there's the...
They already got, the cohort had applied for the money, they had already got an extension for it. There is no other extension they can get. So, in order to get, to access the Ford money, it needs to show that the city council likes this project and is willing to support it. And then when you also go to raise money, that is another thing, is that whoever's gonna donate money, whether it be NORPA, or a veterinarian, or whoever, also needs to know that the city council has said, "Yes, we think this is an important thing for our citizens."
Okay, so do we, beaten on this one pretty hard, do we need to modify any possible motion to incorporate that okay to the Ford Foundation?
Mr. Mayor, I, I would just like to point out, during the Pioneer Park fundraising efforts, 95 percent of it came from my office, and my man-hours from the people that worked in my office, taking away man-hours from the community in general. If it goes forward, I just want to make it clear that these, these community, this community fundraising needs to be done from community members, and not depended on my office to raise funds, or make phone calls, or hold events. It's gotta be from community members. We're already shorthanded as it is. I'd sure hate to spend more, allocate more hours for fundraising for a dog park. And I don't really have a dog in this fight, pardon the pun, but we have enough work to do as it is for the, the general public than to raise funds for the dog park. I just want to make that point.
Well, you guys have already been through it with Kelly raising money for the things that she did.
Excuse me?
You've already been there with Kelly.
Yeah, and I don't think that was a proper way to use public funds, to have public funds raising community funds.
And I think that that's pretty clear in this. The remainder of the cost for the dog park would have to be raised from community fundraising efforts.
That's correct, that's why I put that in.
Right. And so I think that that's clear.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
You were at the planning commission as well as I, when a member of the audience looked at Kelly and said, whether it's tongue-in-cheek or not, said, "I guess you have a lot more work to do." So, to Lance's point, he's absolutely right. I think the expectation, whether, like I said, it's tongue-in-cheek or just joking, that was, that was stated. So, one more clarification, back to this Ford Foundation thing. So you're telling me that the process was already in place to get to this position tonight?
The, the, the process was originally, the Ford Foundation cohort was originally going to do improvements, an improvement to the park, part of Pioneer Park thing. When that looked like that was not going to happen, they went back to Ford and said, "Can we have an extension so we can see what else, so that we just don't lose this money, where else we can put this money?" And so they said, "Yes," they'd give them an extension. At that point, that group started looking around and saying, "Okay, where is there already something in place that looks like it's moving forward?" And the dog park was what floated to the top.
I met with that group in my office, and they were looking for somewhere to put that money or fund, and the dog park had just started, the new location had just been to the forefront, and I asked them if they'd be interested in that, and they said yes, but they had to work with the Ford Family Foundation and get all their Ps and Qs handled, and they've come back and said they would like to participate.
Also, you need to know that I was actually part of the training, I was one of the trainers in that cohort, and the dog park was the second thing. When they were looking at what project to do, they, the dog park was actually on their agenda. The, the Pioneer Park won, but the dog park was the second thing. So this is very fitting that it go here. So at this point, they cannot extend, Ford has given them an extension of time, and it's not something they can re-extend.
And that's what I'm asking you. What, the extension of time is tonight, you're saying it's tonight?
Oh, I'm, I'm saying that I think that it's like within the week or something. It was supposed to be before...
Reese?
I was trying to look up my email from the guy at Ford, who I told, last week when he said we just had until last week, I said we'd had Parks Board 100 percent, Planning Commission 100 percent, and there was a meeting tonight where they'd be voting. And so I'm supposed to let him know tomorrow what the result of that was, and then they can go forward with approving it. But yeah, they aren't going to extend it any longer.
Okay.
So are we ready for a motion?
I'm ready. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve the proposal to allow staff to prepare plans for the dog park to be located at 180 North Fourth Avenue, and to allow the, the community to raise the additional funds. And I guess that gives them, what, did you say, six, seven months to, to raise the funds, to put it into place?
Okay.
I'll second that.
Basically, option one?
Option one.
A motion to end, Ralph, a second? Okay. I'd like to say, before we vote, that I think all the, the concerns raised and, and the points raised on this have been certainly heartfelt and well-thought. And I certainly would like to see something happen here. But, and I guess I'll get in the middle of the fundraising for the next couple of years, or whatever it takes, to try to, try to, four months to make this happen, okay.
I just have one clarification. You guys will continue looking for a community garden. Will you continue to pursue that?
That is the number one thing on the agenda for the next Parks Board. They're bound and determined to find a location for that. That's all I can tell you.
We actually have several different possibilities.
I wanted to make sure that there would be a community garden.
Yeah. That, wherever we locate that, it's, it's gonna need some, some thinking, too.
Well, there's something, you, there's probably gonna be some cost to that as well, so I just, that should be pointed out.
Yeah. But, yeah, that's, that's another whole separate, separate thing. Okay. Any other questions, discussion, thoughts? Let's go to the vote. Alyssa, would you do your thing again, please?
Sure. Counselor Lewis?
Yes.
Counselor Usleman?
Yes.
Counselor Gladwell?
Yes.
Counselor Quigley?
Nope.
Counselor Nigle?
Yes.
Motion passes four to one.
All right. Thank you, folks.
Thank you.
Keep going on this. Okay, so we're back, we're down to, we're down to reports, and the first one, Finance Department report. I finally had a question on these, and I ask the gals just about every month when I see these, and I'll ask them, are these all the same people, these delinquent notices, 508, 547 of them? And then I saw one tonight that I hadn't, a question I hadn't raised with the gals in the office. I said, "We send these courtesy delinquent notices to landlords?" And since I, I haven't asked them yet, I haven't got an answer. But what is that about? Keith, can you tell us about what that's about?
Ultimately, the landlords are responsible for the water service, so if it's not paid, it would be their responsibility, so that's why they get notified of the, of the delinquent notices.
Other possibility is that, like, shut the water off?
I'm not sure if I understand the question. I mean, basically what it's saying is if they don't pay...
It'd certainly get somebody's attention, wouldn't it?
Right now, we do go to great lengths and give a lot of notices, and we are looking about what we can do to try to maybe not deal with the issues that we deal with on a, on a regular basis, and, and not go to those steps. As of comparing us to other cities, I think we are more and more generous, and we give multiple opportunities for people to, to pay, and we're spending a lot of time and resources, so I think we're looking about potentially changing that and being maybe a little more aggressive, and, and putting a little more onus on the property owners to pay.
Well, that is, and has been forever, as I can remember, my, my concern about the amount of staff time we spend on these utility bills. So those, those courtesy delinquent notices go to landlords, that your tenant hasn't paid his or her water bill.
Correct. Because ultimately, the landlord's gonna be responsible if it's not paid, correct.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Judging from the feedback from the last council meeting on the landlords that were here, I don't even see the front porch, I, I, I see your, I see your issue there. They're claiming they didn't see, they don't get the...
You don't, you don't live here, you don't keep track of what's going on. All, all you're looking for is that rent.
Correct.
I guess I, somewhere along the line, I'd like to, I'd like to do something about some of these things.
Well, I think there's a couple of things. I mean, you know...
Because if it's the same amount every month, we're not, we're not getting the word out.
I don't think it's getting the word out. I think it's just the, 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 the dance that's done every month, maybe that's the way of saying it?
The what now? I'm sorry.
The dance that's done every month. I mean, if you look at the numbers for delinquent notices sent out, courtesy delinquent notices to landlords, and notified pending shut-offs and penalties and interruption of services, if you go back and look, the, the data's actually strikingly consistent.
The same budget every month.
Right. So you're dealing with the same budget every month, and we do the full dance every month, and, and, you know, at some point, maybe, and this is a conversation we need to have at a future date of, of what other cities do, and maybe not spending quite so much staff time and, and putting a little onus on some of these property owners and renters and landlords to, to not make us spend significant amounts of staff time and energy. And every month, with our Public Works crew and our utility billing crew, multiple days are spent with nothing but this, I'll call the dance again, but with this dance. And so I've had a conversation with, with Cindy and with Elizabeth to look into and try to do this, but what we also know is, yes, it is the same people pretty much every month. I mean, there, there are people, you know, all of us may forgive our bills on occasion, but in general, what you're seeing is the same, same group of folks.
We, can, Mr. Mayor, can I say some?
Yes, please, go ahead.
I've actually was involved with Eugene Water and Electric around some of these issues. I was on their board for low-income services. And one of the things that was brought forward there, because we were looking at other, other areas that had done something, and one of the things that had worked, I forget where it came from, Kentucky or somewhere, that once you were shut off, you had to, it was like a two-week wait to get turned back on. And that changed the amount of people getting shut off.
Shut-offs are, are quite dramatic, and you'd be surprised how many people wait till five o'clock to, to come in, 4:55, 4:58, 4:59. Yeah, and we hear the same stories of why, but then the issue becomes trying to get a staff member, and then we're paying a staff member overtime potentially, or even, you know, a staff member who's exempt who's now spending his, his time and his evenings going to shut off those last-minute people. Just understand, this is why we need to come back to you with what our proposal is. Not gonna be too popular, especially as we try to change maybe the pattern and what has become accepted on how we do things around here, so. People know the system, and they know how to play, play it, so we play it every month.
Keith, with a, a mild and loving temperament, do you ever let your guard down on this and say, "My God, we're gonna fix this. We're gonna do something," rather than just go along, you're not going along with it, we are, and everyone is, the gals in the office, but...
I think we're all, at this point, frustrated, and, and I know Elizabeth's currently looking into, in exploring with other cities, and there's conversations going on, and, and things going on in Lift serves to try to get, you know, what would be a good program for us and for our city. You know, to give a different example, we, we noticed the same issue with mowing, so what we did is, we took the people that were frequent issues with mowing, and we sent, at the start of the year, a nice notice that said, "This is your warning. Make sure you take care of your property this year." So you can try other things to try to do that, but I do think it's going to be, we will get some pushback on any sort of changes we make that makes this streamlined, if you will. So we just need to be prepared for that, and that's why I think we'll come forward with any sort of proposed changes that we, we want to make. But, to the point, this has been a constant point of discussion, and you can see the consistency in the data, so, and we can try to get more people sign up for automatic bill pay and, and all of that, but that's still, you know, things we can try to do that maybe help, but I think bottom line is it's gonna be those same folks. It'll be more convenient for those of us who write the check every month, or come down every month, but...
But you can also do, put some things in place that, that are more helpful than hurtful. So if, you know, if you have somebody who continually has a budgeting problem, so maybe we need to be offering people who, as a requirement, that if you're, you know, if you get shut off three times, that now you're required to take a budgeting class, and we will assist them through a local nonprofit that does budgeting classes for free, and they can take that budgeting class.
That's fine.
And, and so we're, we're trying to help them be better, instead of making it look like we're just being mean. I know that we had a program where you could get certain energy assistance if you went through a, a financial class that our local credit union came up with for us, and they were willing to do that, and you could, at the end of that class, you got, that's when you got help, or that's when the utility would work with you if you completed that class, so. We gotta be a, a, a new, a city that, that comes up with something new, like offering their, their people some help to get out of the, the, some skills, so that they aren't stuck in the same old thing.
Pay it up a year ahead. You don't have to worry about it for a while. I don't want to be mean about it either, but it's just the frustration of having to deal with the same thing all the time, and maybe no end in sight. We got some pushback from landlords last meeting, the three of us that were here, and we were all very sympathetic with their plight. These poor people doing their very best to provide adequate housing to the half of our city that lives in rentals, and then we found out that none of them keep track of what goes on in the city, because they don't live here, and a lot of the sympathy just sort of evaporated, went away. At least mine did. Anyway, enough. Moving along. Chief?
Mayor and Council, you have the statistical report for the month of October before you. Most of the numbers are in line with previous months. There is one number I wanted to bring to your attention, and that has to do with reckless driving. There's a, there's a 700% increase from past years. I looked to see what those were, and the majority of those, actually all of them were from DUIs this year. There was quite a few DUIs that also received the reckless driving on top of that. And then the other thing I wanted to let you know is that Wednesday is the, the annual community Thanksgiving dinner, and a majority of the officers will be volunteering to, to help deliver those, to shut in, those meals to shut-ins on Wednesday.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Chief. Lance, anything else this evening?
No, sir. Mr. Mayor, you have the monthly operating report for, from Public Works for October. I have nothing further to add to that, but I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have regarding it.
Lance, a question.
Certainly.
Well, you're involved. Dan, here's one for you. When this bunch of, of new housing have, building permits comes in with these new subdivisions coming on, we gonna, we staffed adequately to handle those? We hope, I know we hope, but what do you think?
Yes.
Okay, good. That's a nice positive answer.
I would disagree somewhat with that, Mr. Mayor, but that's three-quarters of my department.
Oh. Well, you guys kind of live in the same building, so...
Kinda.
Yeah, no. Okay. Dan, anything else?
I have nothing to add to my report. I'll answer any questions council has.
Okay. Questions? Jenna, library?
So you have my report before you. I would like to say that our next Oregon author visit is a local author. His name is Ron Minor, and he'll be here on the 8th.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to go back one, just for a minute. I'd like to thank Dan for his continued work with Friends of Old Town and helping out with... out with what's going on in the downtown area. We have a lot of citizens over the last year or so, we're very disappointed that we didn't have more of the Christmas movie and the things that had happened downtown, and we, that's all kind of been reinstated, and we're going to have a Christmas movie this year and some other stuff, and Dan had put in some work on that, and I just wanted to thank him for that.
Okay, thank you. Let's see. Presentations, comments from the public, anything back there in our constantly attending group? Thank you for being here. Business from the city administrator?
Just one thing, just, we only have one more meeting planned for the rest of the year, that's Monday, December 5th. At this time, we do plan on canceling the December 19th meeting, so just wanted to let everyone know that is our anticipated last meeting of the year.
One meeting in December, and that's it, huh?
That's it.
Okay, that's probably enough. All right, anything else? I've said more than I usually do, so I'm done for the evening. I thought about giving a housing rehabilitation vocal award to whoever's doing that house, and I find out it's a duplex on Third and Hollister. This old wreck of a house that was destined, I could just see it, a big sign. State and Fire Department will be burning this building down next week as we try to figure out how to put fires out, or at least not encourage them. And there it is, being renovated, and I was impressed with that.
Yeah.
And that should be interesting to see when it's finished. So business from the council, anything? Future agenda items are certification of election results, the WAVE franchise agreement extension, and SCTC franchise agreement extension. Is there anything else this evening? Let's go home.